Time to make a grievance?
Yeah.
He's in Steve, though. Yeah, he's coming back today, but he's maintaining. Thank you for asking.
Good morning, everyone. We call to order the regular meeting of Trinity Bay Conservation District. Today is Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-five, nine a.m. We'll begin with invocation and pledge allegiance.
Glory, we pray for all those victims and first responders that happened over the fourth of July weekend for them and their families. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from evil. For thine is the power, the kingdom, the power of your creation. I pledge allegiance to the prior of the United States of America, and to the beloved, gorgeous saints, all human, under God, and in the gospel, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas prior, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and the best.
All right, jury, you have, uh...
Yes, sir. Anthony Lawrence and Elton, walk up here. Uh, guys, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and willingness to go above and beyond, your regular job responsibilities in helping train new meter readers, your hard work and dedication have not gone unnoticed, and we truly appreciate you going out and doing just whatever training you pay these individuals for. So we thank you very much. Turn around and we'll, uh, that's what we're having.
Yeah, okay, here we go. Let's give them some strength. Okay, I'm gonna take several. There we go, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, I have a very...
Yep, thank you, guys. We'll move on to public comment. Gloria, you have something for us this morning?
Yes, but I wanted to address the board in total and since two board members are missing.
Okay.
I'll just make my comments next.
Next time?
Yeah.
Sure, no problem.
But if they're not timely, you know, so, okay.
Gotcha, not a problem. We'll skip you until next month?
Yes.
All right. Item number four is going to approve minutes of the regular meeting held June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ricky is the major reader.
Yeah, I've read over the minutes. I'm making motion to accept the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor. Motion is approved. Item five, approve financial reports for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir. The general fund, we received one hundred and ten thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Our expenditures were three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. We're seventy-five percent into fiscal year, and we've expended fifty-three point three oh percent of the budget. Uh, fund balances for June were nine million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-two cents. Water and sewer revenues were six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. The expenditures were four hundred and fifty-six thousand, seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. We're seventeen, uh, seventy-five percent into fiscal year, and we've expended sixty-two point eight one percent of our budget. Again, the total fund balances for June are nine million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Make a motion to approve the financial report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number six, approve tax report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Chambers County, we received sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents, with the current collection rate of ninety-seven point nine five percent. At this time last year, we received forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-four cents, with a collection rate of ninety-seven point nine four percent. Jefferson County, we received a hundred and ninety dollars and fifteen cents. Our current levy rate is ninety-five point eight oh. Uh, at this time last year, we received three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, with a collection rate of ninety-five point three eight percent.
Motion to approve the tax report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor. Motion carries. Review and consider approval accounts payable?
Yes, sir. Accounts payable, uh, for the month, uh, accounts receivable was twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, this is what we receive for like whenever a bus line, lines are busted or somebody pays us to do something. We wrote off everything up to this year. There were some things that were on there that we were unable to collect, so there was... So we read, uh, read, wrote off the last two years and, uh, caught it up because some of them were like hitting a fire hydrant or breaking a line or something like that, and we tried to, to get the money, but, you know, for two hundred dollars, it's not hardly worth trying to do it. So, anyway, before it got out of hand, Justin had mentioned it to me whenever we came down about why we kept that old stuff on the books. I know we had grown up with a bunch of our other debt, uh, and we're catching things up, so we did the same thing here. So we just want to let the board know. Unpaid accounts for this month is four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Accounts payable was three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, we bought meters out of the construction fund for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve if the accounts payable is ready.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item make considering possible action, adopting HB fifteen twenty-two, changes to notice requirements under the Texas Open Acts Meeting, Open Meetings Act.
We actually have a policy on this, so, uh, Kate had sent me a letter saying that it had changed under this legislature. So, uh, we were just amending the policy that instead of seventy-two hour notice, you'd have to give three business days prior to the meeting.
You have to comply with it regardless because it's the Open Meetings Act. It doesn't take effect until September, but we're going ahead and trying to implement. And also, um, whenever you're adopting your budget, you have to post a copy of your budget along with your agenda. And all this came from, I think there was some, uh, city in Texas, and the people said that they posted their agenda late on Friday, and there wasn't a notice, et cetera. So just remember, you're a Wednesday, so you all actually will have to post early Friday morning, so that it's on a Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, because you need to make sure you count, you know, count the, count the weekends. So needless to say, y'all are fine. It's more like entities that have Monday meetings, they were just posted on Friday, and they're gonna have to kind of revisit that. So anyways, yes. But you can just make a motion in a second to say that you're going to be complying with the new, uh, Open Meetings Act posting requirement.
I'm making a motion to, that we are...
Amending.
Amending the...
Open Meetings.
Open Meetings Act to meet the requirements under the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Oh, second.
Uh, motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, consider possible action declaring a twenty thirteen Eagle Beaver fifty-five TSL dash, uh, four axle, low boy, bin number one, one, two, S D five five seven, X D L O seven seven eight five four as surplus property.
Yes, sir. We purchased our new trailer and we, uh, which horn doesn't have any options during the summertime, but, uh... So the next one they'll have is September, so we need to declare this as surplus property to be able to sell it in the, or in September.
I'm making a motion declaring a twenty-two, two thousand and thirteen Eagle Beaver fifty-five G S L dash three, backslash, four axle, low boy, bin number one, one, two, S D five five seven, X D L O seven seven eight five four as surplus property to be auctioned off for warrant auction.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number ten, consider possible action on F Y twenty twenty-five bond application.
At this point, they're, they're up to ninety-nine pages is how long it is, and, uh, Kate sent out an email day before yesterday. There's still four or five items that they're, they're working on, so...
Right, we're still, still working on it. Yes, it's a hundred-page document that the engineer and financial advisor and I are compiling, but we're pretty much almost done. There's just a couple more attachments that we have to finalize before we proceed.
Very good. Do we have, need any action on that?
No, we can just take that as an update.
Okay, thank you. Item number eleven, consider possible action on twenty-inch waterline project?
Yes, sir. All pipe is being delivered today, seventh and ninth, and tomorrow, seventh and tenth. Jeremy will be out on site handling it. The items that we are waiting on are the valves, reducers, Megalubs. We can't, uh, really install anything without the Megalub, except the four under I ten. Uh, so anyway, uh, so, the, you're correct, that was our pipe out there in that, that yard. So they're delivering the pipe and stuff today, so they're moving on.
But they're, we're gonna have to wait on casing, and we still don't know how long?
Uh, he said all the pipes, evidently, they found some casings, then mainly they're waiting on the Megalubs to be able to put the fittings and stuff together.
Very good. No action needed?
No, sir, just mainly these are, I gotta put these on here for updates.
No problem. Item number twelve, consider possible action on the water tank design.
Uh, we expect to submit plans, specification, and C T study, uh, contact time study to the T C U Wednesday, July twenty-third. T C U requires a sixty-day review of the plans and specifications. If they have any comments regarding the modifications prior to approval for construction, they might start another sixty-day review with modifications to submit. Therefore, our very best case for approval of, uh, construction is late September. Uh, preparation allowed prior to then, the construction may not begin until we obtain the T C U approval.
Very good. No action needed on that as well. Item thirteen, consider possible action on West Side wastewater evaluation study.
Model, uh, validation meeting was held with myself and Diane, and they requested some more information from us, and we provided all of that to, uh, T C U, uh, comments and everything, and additional information have been incorporated into model, uh, drafting model results, draft TM for August, uh, twenty twenty-five, bending, analog development, configuration, confirmation. So anyway, we're, uh, they asked for how many, uh, grinders and some other stuff that we put out there to, to complete the, uh, stuff. So Diane has provided that information, so hopefully somewhere around August.
They should complete?
They should be, yes.
Totally, okay, that would be nice. I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Yes.
Item, uh, number fourteen, consider possible action amending the split service policy.
Uh, we talked, I brought this up at the last meeting about what we could do as far as, uh, being able to turn people on and off, and what we could do. Uh, Kate had said that we cannot charge for two meters and only have one there, according to the P C, uh, we, uh, Public Utilities Commission now, and so on and so forth. So Diane is, uh, is putting that and amending that, that policy right now, and we'll have a policy for the board to, to approve, watch all the updates in. And she's, Kate's put in her input, and we've contacted the Public Utilities Commission and the T C U about some of the things that we can and can't do as far as safer. If the person does not have water, and they just have a sewer pump station, uh, we need to write them a letter, give them a week's notice or some certified letter before we were to pull their pump out for an on-pay or things like that. So Diane is working on updating that policy for us.
Okay. Item number fifteen, consider possible ac- action submitting a grant application for seeding on ditch banks to control erosion through H A R C.
Uh, I went to Double Bottle, uh, watershed meeting here not too long ago, and, uh... They, uh, they were talking about, they were seeding some, uh, some drainage ditches and stuff in Houston. So I talked to them, I said, "Look, you know, we clean ditch banks all the time. Would y'all be interested in seeding some of our ditch banks?" Because it would stop erosion, the other things that they're doing on Double Bottle, they're trying to plant grass and everything to, to filter the water before it goes into the ditches and so on and so forth. So through the, uh, the Galveston Bay Foundation, we are looking at submitting a rec, uh, grant. Uh, them and Harris County, uh, to be able to, uh, get a grant that whenever we're through cleaning a ditch to be able to go back and seed it. And, uh, we do that now by flying in there with an airplane with dry grass and this and that and other. But they wanna, so they'll submit, uh, out of the grant, they will actually pay for all the seed and everything else, and some of it they actually drill in, but they just want to give a drill, rice in and stuff. So, uh, it's a way that we possibly can get some money to seed some of our ditch banks. So, uh, with the board's approval, we're gonna apply for a, a grant to get some seed.
I'm making a motion for submitting a grant application for seeding on ditch banks to control erosion through the H A R C.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries. That's all we have for new business, uh, drainage port names?
Yes, sir. I want to start off with, uh... The Onion Bottle Tributary, we actually finished this, uh, late last week and, uh, completely finished the mop out and got all vegetation down. We did have a couple of pipeline issues. We crossed over, uh, got all that taken care of. The, the, both of those legs, there's a leg underneath that, just underneath that, uh, just not highlighted. That whole section is mopped out all the way down to where it comes into the main bay beyond nineteen eighty-five now. So it's a, made a tributary to all those farm lanes and, and that whole area in there that we got completed late last week, and there are a couple of photos in there, uh, show what it looks like now. And, uh, Elm Bowl, we are continuing to, to do work on Elm Bowl. Long Reach has got a little bit of work up on the, uh, northwest corner up there, and then the big Vicon is progressing south. Uh, again, lots of beaver dams and stuff. Uh, we will continue to push that bayou well south beyond, uh, nineteen forty-one and, uh, try to take care of all, all that that's happening on that bayou. Um, Spittle Top, uh, the machine that's been on this, uh, bayou, we just got it, got it fixed. I had some hydraulic issues and had issues getting some valve, uh, hydraulic valves. The machine is ready to go back out into the field, uh, as of yesterday. So, um, we'll get back on to this. That machine will continue heading south, uh, cleaning this bayou, getting all that cleaned out. This, uh, again, this is some pictures of the previous work that it's done on that bayou. Uh, Double Bottle Tributary, um, here from this picture, the guys have moved, have, uh, went out there yesterday, and they lacked about nine hundred feet from having completely done it all on its own as far as we can go. Uh, this is the ditch that you could not see. It was completely covered in, and, uh, I've got, uh, that bucket machine dipping on it, and, uh, the Vicon, the new Komatsu Vicon that we have has done all the cutting, uh, on that ditch. And, uh, like I said, before you could even see it, uh, you could see it was trickled water in the middle. Uh, those people are extremely happy that we're coming through there. Uh, and there's, there's a ditch just to the east of that, and we're gonna go tax it until we get them it out. It looks the same, but... Uh, spray crews still spraying, uh, got with the herbicide applicators, and they put out about twenty-five miles worth of, of chemical, covered, covered that non-ditches. We're still mowing and, and taking care of that as much as we can, uh, weather permitting. This is a picture of what some of our ditches look like that we're mowing. Uh, that's our skid steer with the, our brush hog attachment, and just, just an idea. It only takes a couple of months, and that stuff is well over your head, uh, what we deal with. As y'all know, we have plenty of ditch to take care of. Uh, I put together a list. I didn't want to, uh, recognize that it is hurricane season. Um, I know we're getting into what will be the heart of hurricane season, and these are some areas, uh, that have been in the sites for a little while. Uh, Oyster Bottle, south of Fairview, need some attention, uh, some, somewhat of like what we did at Spittle Top. Part of Double Bottle, which I'm already working on, uh, same, same thing, uh, our floating barriers. We have floating barriers out there that kind of help protect lilies and stuff from getting up into our blocks and getting to those, to get them dipped out.
How many, how much is Oyster Bottle? How many miles is it? I know it's not as much as Spittle Top, I wouldn't think.
No, we've only got about eight miles we need to dig into.
Okay.
Uh, you know, and I'm shooting from the hip.
Yeah, I mean, just about, approximately.
Uh, the area south of Fairview is, is where we gotta go dig in at. Uh, everything, we've done a lot of work on most of the bottles up through M state ten. We gotta go hit that box, and we just, we gotta get the right equipment in there. It's gonna be a three, three-piece equipment job, and we just gotta get in there and dig in once we get some of the stuff, uh, done.
Okay.
Um, we got a, a swing, uh, swing gate, a part of, uh, ground roof gates down on Robinson Bowl. Um, I had the guys go down and take measurements of the gate. It's broken. Uh, gonna get the materials together, get working on that. Uh, we gotta get that repaired. Uh, that keeps a lot of saltwater coming into Robinson Lake. Elm Bowl, anything we were doing, working on now, uh, I still have Dallas Springs Crossing that we're gonna go and do some repairs to that's washing out. It, it is very tight life all the time. I mean, twice a day, water coming in and out. We did build a, uh, old kid scenario down there, uh, but it's still, it leaches, and it just, it eats it away. It's still a useful crossing by all means, but we're gonna go down there, do some repairs to it. Um, and Steve Fitzgerald, so, uh, board had approved, uh, not so long ago, uh, thirty thousand dollars we could spend down there to try to mitigate some of that, uh, erosion that's happening on those gates. So, and this may not even be, I may be missing a couple, but this is, this is some key items, uh, that are in the sites for our drainage.
Good.
When we met with the heart in the Galveston Bay Foundation, I talked to him about Robinson Lake, that how we had partnered with the Brown Foundation to fix the levee down there and so on and so forth, and that they could help us any way about the erosion there, and they talked, you know, some living grasses and different things like that. So they're looking at possibly trying to help us with that kind of stuff also. We, uh, you know, may have always been a handout. So anyway, I hit them up for that while we were there too, because, I mean, erosion's gonna continue, so, anyway.
Have they done any work on that south end of Spittle Top for the, in the curve right there yet, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Not sure if they've done it or not?
I can make contact with you.
Oh, that's fine. I, I was just curious as to if, if they have, uh, worked on that yet.
Uh, as far as business side, I know that was the end of the report, but I had some pictures of the rig that we finished that I talked about previous meeting that we were working on, uh, as for the attachment for our long reach Komatsus. Uh, that'll work on either machine, and this is pictures of the new trailer that we purchased, and I put it, where it got here, hauling equipment. So it's, it's been working out pretty, it's nice, you know? We don't have to, uh, we don't have to fix it before we use it. We can just use it. So, uh, thank you for all of that. That's my work.
All right, thanks, Amy. Uh, David, what are you doing?
I have to see an update on the, on the meter change up project. I guess the, the guys that recognized it this morning, one of them couldn't make it, you know, be here next meeting, but two of these guys come out of retirement to come back and help us rig those meters. So we really appreciate what they've done. Everybody's had to pitch in from the top to the bottom to make up for the two meter rears that we're missing right now. If you've been somebody, you gotta drill in somewhere. So, uh, that being said, uh, the, the meter project did start around the middle of our third week right now. Uh, they come in here hoping to change five hundred meters a week and we're so scattered out out here, it's not happening. Uh, they are doing a good job. They're moving pretty good so far in the past two and a half weeks. They've stopped four hundred and thirty-one and this is, uh, as of the month, so by now we're probably around five hundred that they've been stopping since they've been here. Uh, we're still installing some on our own also. Uh, the guys are going back on some of the routes that they have changed all the five-inch meters, picking up the one-inch now. Uh, I think I said something a minute or two back how hard time I was having to get these nine-inch meters. They got three in last week. I needed two of them. I'm gonna add more three. They're supposed to, let me know, I'm, I'm waiting on, telling them now how long I have to wait to get these before we're in. Uh, these inch and a half meters are your McDonald, your Dachshund box stuff like this, the real smaller commercial. They do a lot of water business, you know, but, and we need to get those things also. Uh, so far on our part, we've changed seven hundred and twelve since October and, uh, I have not been able to get anybody out on these, on these skilled services yet on the ones that are vacant and stuff like that. We're running a, a, a crew with the contractor to keep up with broke lines and replace boxes and all this stuff, uh-
Are we able to keep up on that?
Yes, surprisingly.
Yeah, I, I thought that was gonna be a project.
I thought it was gonna be pretty bad. It's, it's, it's not been that bad. I think so far one day we've had eights and most of them bad as far as, uh, broke lines.
Yeah. I just heard the boxes, height of the boxes and stuff would be an issue.
We've been trying to get so far. And I'm still my first time on boxes, so we're running it. The lids, you know, I have the hole in for the antennas. They have to be changed regardless. We're gonna go through them. Uh, we did run on one yesterday that they got to it and the media was leaking when we got there. So I just gotta make the work all on them and went in and changed it. And another big counter we got this customer causing a high bill. This is why, you know, we've already gone top of it. But so far, so good. It's, it's, it's going pretty good and, and, uh, they're working five days a week and we're staying with them. And, uh, we hadn't got any complaints off the change out itself yet as far as people being, having discolored water or, uh, or being without water. Crystal put it out that we know what areas we were in and everything. And I think things weren't really good so far.
Good. Very good.
Uh, I'll try to have some more stuff for y'all next time on general land. It's like I said, right now, we're keeping our head above water and probably change up going on. And, and I got two potential meter rears that I want on my arm. We're gonna begin to shop right now and see how it works.
Is that someone we've already had here?
They're already here, yes. Uh, I did have an ex-employee who used to rig for us three, four years ago that wanted to come back. So I'm, I'm gonna have to try now about my new being fixed.
Very good. I know it's hard to find people. That's, uh, and, and I guess we can talk about it at this point. Uh, we, we've had an issue trying to, uh, find a, a water manager, water sewer manager. And I asked Jerry to kind of look at it, see, see what we can do as far as finding someone, uh, to, to, to locate that, an employment, uh, agency to do that. And Kate, if you have any input to that, get with Jerry on it. And I'm sure as many people as, as you've seen, you'll know who to go see. But we need to look at that. That may be the only way to find someone.
We, uh, we've advertised in the paper locally and then we went to the trade magazines and then we actually went to the TML, Texas Municipal League. And I actually, uh, after we talked, I contacted, uh, SGR, which is a headhunter company that works for TML. And they said, I, I had requested proposals from them and I'll leave my list to the board to let you look, take a look at it. But roughly, they want twenty-four thousand dollars to go out and try to find somebody for you.
And, and there's no guarantee that they will find anyone.
And there's no, and what you, you're aware of this company also, since they work through the TML, they usually find city managers and stuff like that. So just for, just, just for informational purposes, I would say they've found and, but this, this is what they're asking for, uh, to take them, go out and actually drive recruits.
We look at them and see if there's maybe some others, um-
I would say I have two water districts that are looking to replace their new hall managers due to the fact they want to retire and they've been searching now for over eight months. It's very difficult to find.
Have, have they, to what extent have they gone to look?
They've done the same. TRO, they put it in Texas Water, TML, they, uh, called other water districts to see and it's just very, it's, they're having to look for people that don't have experience but maybe could be trained. It's, it's very difficult. And you know, you have-
Sure.
Somebody though has to keep those licenses up. So if you do bring in somebody, well then the employees here have to have that license that you can work off of. So I think it's just a statewide issue of finding qualified individuals to come, um, you know, work in the, in the water and sewer area.
Well, I mean, that's, and, and I know we've got a lot of other things going on, but it, it needs to be kind of a priority to, uh, to locate someone. And I know y'all are trying. Uh, yeah, y'all, y'all are paying the price.
Yes, sir.
No doubt about it. So.
I have a few other little updates for you. If you recall, uh, what's just one here, but, uh, Valero contacted us that they had some fuel storage tanks and they were gonna give them to us and all this and they had rocked on. And finally, I talked with them and their, their attorneys wouldn't let them give it to us. So we're back to square one. We were looking at possibly putting a ten thousand gallon diesel tank and possibly say two or three thousand gallons of gasoline here and home road diesel that way in an emergency situation like a hurricane or something. We had fuel to fuel our generators at the water plants and here and basically for emergency setup. Whenever we were in the analog office, I had a dual tank that had water and diesel in it. And it was also, I had it set up on our fueling card. So if you got fueling out of that tank, you had to poke, poke your card in. So you knew who was getting the fuel and how much and what truck and so on and so forth. So, anyway, so, uh, I see we're sourced well and HJC and a few of them have some of that stuff on there and Amos has looked into it before. But we were hoping they were willing to get rid of these tanks and the pumps and everything. And, uh, um, so he finally called me and said that their, their, uh, their lawyers wouldn't let us, let us have. Uh, possibly, uh, on, already on this job on, uh, on the water, uh, we're gonna have to have the taps made, which we do that at the beginning. Then, uh, this, but then it wouldn't, and this contractor spoke of work to do that. So it's, uh, that this contractor gave me sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is to make ten-inch, twelve-inch, eight-inch and a couple of eight-inch taps where they're to come in hot tappled. Uh, we don't have a machine large enough to do a tap that size. So anyway, that, this is what, and we've hired them before whenever we made a tap for stuckies or whatever.
So they'll, they'll have to do the taps, then we're gonna actually do the connection, our stuff.
Well, they're, they're there already. So, I mean-
Let them do it as well.
It's, it's, it's right there.
Okay.
So you're, you're making the, you're putting a saddle on the, on the line and our, our, on an HDB fusing it on there and so on and so forth. So, anyway, so, uh, I'm gonna check with, uh, the engineer and see if it's better to just get three bids for it, for this or to do the change order unless just E-Step's doing it, whichever one's the less, as best. Uh, also at the water plant, part of our, uh, our list of things that needed to be repaired, in both plants, we have twelve-inch distribution valves. And what these are, they're on the high, high service pumps. So you've got a high service pump running and all of a sudden you've met your demand. So the pump kicks off and what happens is the water will start backing up and it'll give you water hammer. Sounds like it's gonna blow the whole building out. So anyway, they're, both of them have twelve-inch detective check valves on them. That way they close slowly. So it stops the water hammer. Both of them are bad. So they made me a deal about they give you thirty percent off and I bought two of them. And I think I brought that to the board once before. Anyway, so they bought the valves and we're having, gonna have those put in, uh, like the fifteenth of the month or something like that. So that's another update to one of the things that was broken at seventy-three thousand dollars. It's a big item and will come out of our construction account money and to be done. Uh, so anyway, that's, that's pretty much, uh, the other thing that we had, uh, we went back at our work order system. We had a ton of open work orders that were open for the last three, four, five years. So David got with the ladies up front and we closed all the old work orders out till January of this year. So if somebody had a water leak, you know, three years ago, it, it, so anyway, we went ahead and closed everything out and brought everything up to date to January. And then we're looking at those to see if there actually need to be, something needs to be done or it's already been taken care of. And a lot of things, what happens is, let's say you go out for a meter, maybe twenty-five, twenty-five, uh, pearl string. And actually, when the crew gets there, it's a twenty-five, thirty-five pearl string. So they fill out a card that they repaired the leak at twenty-five, thirty-five, but they never closed out the one at twenty-five, twenty-five. So this is how things like that get on there. Or they might use a pearl and, and section or a different address or something. So it's very hard to, uh, to do that. So anyway, we're catching that stuff up.
Do you have any estimate as to how many we do a week, a month, or, or whatever?
How many calls we do?
Yeah. How, how many work orders do we, would we generate over? Just a guess.
I'm gonna say back when we were having the ladies keep up with some of the stuff they've done, we were writing a hundred and twenty-five.
A month?
So how many is there since January, since you cleared all the rest?
Uh, do you have a, did you do a count?
I don't know for sure.
I would imagine it's about three hundred. And we went from a stack like that to a stack like this.
And you're going back to verify.
And then we're gonna verify them and make sure that they've been done or they're not. And it could be a cavity that's in somebody's backyard that could still be there. I know there's a van home over by Victor's building that has never been repaired. And so it's before that it's, but it's still on the books. So, anyways, uh, and, uh, we keep saying, go back to Vermont, but that's where we all came from. So what, what happened was, and like I said, we'd have that where they'd use a different address or something. And at the end of the month, I'd have a list and I'd just put a guy in a truck and let him go drive and see if they'd been done or not. And we'd close them out or we'd take care of it. So anyway, uh, and then it asked about, about closing out the work orders last meeting. So anyways, uh, there's-
Sounds like y'all are making progress on, on the process to, uh, keep those updated. So that's good. All right. Uh, very good. Do we have any need to go to executive session today?
No.
No? All right. Any board member reports? Rick?
Yes, sir.
All right. Everybody's good. I need one more motion.
Next motion will be your turn.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.